Welcome.
I'd like to call, call you to order and welcome everyone here to the gallery as it were. Your home, your home to join us. I know we're hearing about from here from some of you and now some of you in short, so welcome. Jay is not here?
No.
The first part of our agenda is always for public time. If anyone has anything here she would like to say to the school committee that's going forward, use a microphone or I'll pass along whatever they like to pass along. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move along. Under the chair's support, is there anyone, any school committee member who has something that he or she would like to mention for the good of the organization? Yes?
I'd like to thank Principal Dillon. We in Arlington have a long-term exchange with Sister City in Japan. And this year, for the first time, we had the students come and visit Minuteman, the Japanese exchange visitors come and visit Minuteman. And it was, I would say, a roaring success. The school did a wonderful job with them and they were extremely pleased and they were really happy. They gained so much knowledge about what happens here. So, thank you.
We have Sister City.
Oh, yeah.
I can recommend this to Dillon.
I attended the New Skills for Youth meeting, which is a part of the New Skills for Youth state team. And they had a meeting on May 3rd where they worked with the designees who received their first innovation pathways grants. Massachusetts is one of 10 states that is going to be served as demonstration for this new program and for whatever reason I did on their team. Anyway, I've talked to Ed and Kevin about what I learned at the meeting and that's it.
Thank you, Alice. Anyone else? David?
So I have a graduating senior and they had the prom last week. And I have to say, the was a little bit different this year than last year. The kids all assembled here. And there was a really great greeting by Jack and his team. They had a red carpet event where the kids were interviewed and really meant to feel special. All the pictures and dialogue that I heard from the kids over the evening was extremely positive. They had a great time. They all went safely and came back safely. So as a parent, thank you very much. But as a school committee member, I'd be very proud to see the executive staff there, very upbeat. They look very dapper. And the kids had a great time. So well done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving to item D, post-meeting days with school committee and finance committee. Do I have a motion to approve? Any questions about the calendar or discussion about the calendar? It's on page five of the packet.
Just one question.
Yes, Jeff.
Have you managed to determine that none of these days will be on days with storms?
Guaranteed.
Thank you.
War town meetings?
War town meetings. Can you extend it?
Appreciate it.
By power extended town meetings. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I think we're all here tonight. Thank you very much. Superintendent Penner, report. Starts on page seven with the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth poster project. And then there's a series of items here.
So I have the great pleasure of introducing Margie Daniels, who works for the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth. Minuteman has been a partner with the Middle Sex Partnership for many years. And she has a presentation to make.
And we'd like you to go.
Right up there?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, especially about something so happy as the student from Minuteman winning an award. First, before we talk about that, I just would like to say what a total pleasure it has been to work with Superintendent McQuillan over the years and also Principal Dillon. They've been strong supporters of Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth. Many of their staff members have participated in our professional development activities. Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth is a nonprofit organization that was formed 29 years ago by then District Attorney Scott Harshbarger. And our mission is prevention and intervention in matters of health and safety for youth. Every year we sponsor a poster project. And this year, we had 192 entries. Which, and they were fabulous. The topic was Be the Change. And I have to say that the posters, the caliber of the posters turned in were so high, it was very, very difficult for our judges. We have a multi-disciplinary team of judges, which includes school superintendents, police chiefs, fire chiefs, and a variety of educators, particularly art teachers. And we also this year had students, we had some art students join in. And the poster that was done by Zach, which you see displayed up here, is the coloring, the starkness of it, because we're looking for posters that we can display in schools, that will really stand out on walls of schools. And Zach, I have to say, you really hit the jackpot with what you did. So I want to congratulate you and also congratulate you.
Zach?
Oh, yeah.
Know your parents' room?
Yeah.
You're a wonderful teacher.
What was that?
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Zach, and thank you to his parents for being here tonight. It really
And his instructor.
And his instructor.
Maria Galante?
Yes, Maria Galante.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could you get front and center?
So Zach, why don't you just move over?
Can I have a copy of the pictures?
Thank you all very much.
I was talking to Maria in the hallway down here. Another recognition that the Design Division of Communications students received this week, or I received notification of it was about four months ago, we had, I was working with an old colleague who was writing a book, and he asked me to edit the book, and I helped him go through that. And then he couldn't decide on a cover. So he sent me four covers. And I gave them to Maria and the juniors in Design Division of Communications. And they wrote up their assessments and made a recommendation. And just yesterday in the mail, the cover that they recommended was in fact the cover that was published. So I'll share with the class. Congratulations. UMass Donahue Institute is not here. I imagine they had some, is that where Kevin lived? We'll move on. They were traveling for the embers Tuesday afternoon.
They've got tornadoes, warnings out there.
Yeah. School choice. Could we have a motion to, as noted on the?
Don't participate in the choice program for 2018-19 and to inform DESD of this decision by the June 1st deadline. Do you hear our motion?
Second.
Allison Center. Any discussion, any other?
Notice a vote we take every year. School choice has been around since 1993. The Pioneer Institute actually released a paper yesterday saying how great the school choice was, except the amount of money that a school district gets for choice hasn't changed in 25 years. And they do not recognize the distinctive costs of vocational technical education versus regular education. So we choose not to participate in it over the last few years. That's all I have to say.
Just for, under those circumstances, are there any, how many districts still participate? And are any of them pro-pets?
Yes. The Shova Tech is a choice. Is it Whittier, Kevin?
Do we agree we're participating?
I think there's about 45 school districts that are participating.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Any staying in that list? All right, Massachusetts girl in trades, Mary Ann?
Mary Ann, you all know Mary Ann Ham. She's the Director of Special Projects and has been really leading the Women in Trades effort, working with the girls at STEM. And she's going to give us an update over the last year. Is there a handout?
This should be in our, in our.
Regarding on page eight, the new gentleman. Well, page, yeah, page eight.
So this should be a handout. There's a lot of information in that handout. Mass Girls in Trades is supported via our community by three administrators, Steve Schaller, Michelle Roach, and myself. So that shows Dr. McQuillan's support of the program. It was formed in 2015. We had, we addressed the end representation of women in the construction trades. Minuteman and Encore Boston Harbor held a meeting to find some different partnerships that we could have here with them at Minuteman. And one of the things we found was that they needed to address a need for hiring women in the construction trades. And we had women in our construction trades programs, so we thought we'd start there. We brought together a ton of different people, and they're listed there in that sheet. But there were community organizations, trade unions, the Union Apprenticeship Programs, pre-apprentice programs, which help people into the Union Apprentices Program, governmental agencies, Department of Ed, and we also had Skills USA. Currently, there are 13 steering committee members, and we have 26 members on our advisory group. And the list, the list is in that packet. You're going to see a lot of lists, a lot of names, a lot of different organizations. Some of them are partners where they attend our conferences and address our students. And some of them are there working behind the scenes. There's a lot of people that are involved in this effort. We focus our efforts on helping high school girls get into construction trades, but that benefits the high school boys as well. One of the things that we did this year was we had a conference just for career and tech ed seniors throughout Massachusetts. Our program is not just for Minuteman. So we had a meeting, we had brought in all these people, and we're going to discuss what we could do here at Minuteman to promote girls in trades. And it was such, the membership that was at the table were such a high caliber that we decided to attack Minuteman, to attack Massachusetts and reach out to all CTE schools throughout Massachusetts. So it became pretty big right away. That meeting was in December. And in March, we had our first conference. Our first conference, 300 kids attended, 18 schools and 45 teachers. We have more than doubled those numbers now. We've also expanded our conference to Western Mass and Eastern Mass. So now we have two conferences where the Western Mass Building Trades attend the booths at that conference, and the Boston Building Trades attend the booths at this conference. A barrier that we found to the union construction trades was that our teachers, our guidance counselors, teachers, administrators, didn't have access to the union, to the union career pathways. We didn't know how to get to those pathways. This has opened up doors to all educators in Massachusetts and CTE schools. And the partnerships that are growing throughout Massachusetts with the unions is incredible. We have noticed it here in our programs alone. The senior projects, when the senior projects, when the seniors did their presentations, we heard more about the pathways to the union construction trades than we ever have before. We don't have real statistics, real numbers, but we want those numbers and we're going to work on those numbers throughout Massachusetts. So we'll have some real data to support this. One of the biggest things, well, now everything is big here, Mass Girls in Trades, it's huge. It's just huge. But one of the really great things that we've done under the direction of Michelle Roach is we've brought to all schools a non-traditional club called Equity in the Trades Student Leadership Council. These students have clubs at their schools and the leaders get trained in leadership skills twice a year through this program. So the leaders of the clubs come together, they learn presentation skills, how to run a booth, what a booth should have on it, how to speak, how to, just to be leaders. And they have participated in our conferences by having their own booths. And this year, we had, we had, I can't remember, I think I have it here somewhere, but we had 21 schools participating in this club. And nine of those schools did presentation booths at the conference, not all 21, but that was pretty good. And the projects that they do are pretty extensive. They go back to their middle schools, they reach out to their middle schools, and these high school kids are mentors. And they're not just girls, they're girls and boys. It's a equity in the trades club. And they reach out to the middle school and promote a construction trade or a non-trad trade to the middle school kids. They might even promote non-trade in general to their groups. And then they come back and they share their, what their project was at their booth. It's pretty cool. It's another way for putting students at the center of the school, which is really important to me. At these conferences, this year, at the Eastern Conference, which was the last conference this year, it was in March, instead of adults standing in front of the, doing the opening and closing plenaries, we had kids here. We had two students, and they ran the show. They ran the opening and the closing plenary. And they were fabulous. They did better than the adults that were there. We have had representation from Lieutenant Karen Polito. She has spoken at both the Western Mass event and the Eastern Mass event. We've had Secretary Acosta part of this. This year, she had to pass it on to her chief of staff, who was exceptional. And next year, the General Attorney Mara Healy wants to be part of the Mass Girls in Trades. It's a real big thing. And it's really promoting leadership in these girls and giving them the confidence to stay the track of the construction trades that they're in right now. Any questions?
Mary Ann understates it a little bit. This would not exist if it weren't for Mary Ann and Michelle.
And Michelle.
Three years ago, there was nothing. And it's grown to a statewide effort, really, because of the commitment of these folks and, you know, our commitment as a school district.
Four?
I said out two things. There's one, I look at the advisory committee, and Judy Bass, you're, you're on.
That's how Judy is.
And Judy does a lot of work for Minuteman's Communications. Mary Pickett, who we became very close to at MSBA, is on it. And our own Mary Ann Williams, who's our project manager, is part of it. So that means a lot. What's interesting is, is when I'm out on our site...
Gilbein?
It's Gilbein. But when I'm out on our site, and I look around, last Friday, I'll talk about it a little later, but, you know, we had 75, 80 men out there and one woman. And she was doing some roofing work. And, you know, it's a huge need.
We're getting Seymour.
When I look at the men out there, and I hope I'm not going to get in trouble, but, you know, they're all not quite as old as I am, but they're getting pretty close and they're in a white hair out there working. We need young people coming into the trades big time. And I'm sure your husband sees that.
Jim?
And this is all great, and it seems like it's a perfect opportunity for George to talk about this, as he's, as he's talking with eighth grade girls as well as their parents. I think when the parents are seeing, seeing the lineup, lineup of the people who are pushing this, it really perhaps boosted some of the applicants from girls, girls in high school.
And just the only other though, when you look at Mary Ann Williams. So she started out with carpenters union, and then she was doing carpentry, and now she's our honors project manager for Skanska. So there's a great career track.
Anybody else have questions for Mary Ann?
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
It's a great, it's a great effort.
Maybe I'll just go quickly and then we'll go, you can ask, because I'll end it. On page 15 in your packet, you'll see a letter from the ASCA approving our request for delay in having our decennial review. As you may remember, we were supposed to be having it this week, I think. Sometime, when we were going to be moving, it was next fall, right? So we've delayed it two years, and that was approved formally, which was good news. Recent awards and recognitions, we saw one tonight. Did I mention the Markham Award to y'all? Well, right over there is the plaque of the Markham Award. And that was awarded to Adam Howell of Arlington. I just wanted to remind you of that. We'll be doing that at graduation. Another award, I don't know if I can say this yet. We received another half a million dollars from the Capital Skills Grant. I think we can say it.
I hope so.
I don't think so.
Anyway, thanks to the efforts of Steve and Michelle and Mary Ann and a lot of the teachers that were working on that grant application, this is the third one that we've received. And he's going to make it $499, $995, because if we hit a half a million again, the paperwork is very oppressive. So this is to fund our welding program, metal fabric welding, robotics. It's all equipment. It's 100% equipment. It's all going to go with us in the middle. So we're very happy. And I've got to just thank Steve for the work he's done on that. The enabling legislation, just, I just found out, and I'm going to read it to you. I'll send around an update, but here it is. The enabling legislation has now been given its own act, which is House, or own bill number, House Bill H4473. And it's been assigned to committee already. It's the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. I'm preparing some testimony that I've not sent in yet to the chairman, O'Day, James O'Day. I expect that I'll have to go and provide that testimony. I may, we may not. Jay Kaufman's aide has been working with us pretty closely. They made one little tweak to the language, which was to reference 30B in the regulation, which is fine. So it was originally attached to the budget, and it was removed from the budget and given its own bill. So that's where, this was all today.
Go ahead.
Yes. I've also given a copy of all this to the MSBA, spoke with Jack McCarthy personally, so that he was aware from our perspective what we're doing. And I imagine we'll be hearing from them in a few days. The Department of Ed called us and spoke with us about it and understand what our intentions are and are supportive of it. The House, the council for the, the House and the council for the Senate have reviewed it, and they have no issues with it as well. So the path seems to be clearing. And if there's anything I need you all to do, I'll let you know.
So you're participating in this session, the week we have it on this session?
Yeah. From my perspective, it's critical that it gets acted upon.
Oh, yeah. Good, thank you. Any questions about that?
Support staff restructuring. We have posted a part-time position to serve the school committee and the subcommittees of the school committee, and another restructured position to replace some of what Steve has done. I've also reassigned some duties already that Steve had had to others, who are getting training in those areas. We have a very good pool of candidates for both positions. I believe we have about 14 or 15 for the full-time position, and seven, seven or eight from the part-time position, but there's pretty good candidates in there. We're going to be reviewing those and coming up with three or four folks to interview in each of those. When those dates are set, I'll let you know. Dave and perhaps one other school committee member, I invite you to sit in on those and assist with asking questions and such. I hope to do that within the next three weeks.
Is, is the part-time, part-time position sufficient hours that the person will qualify for, qualify for benefits or not?
They probably would, yes. When you add up all the night hours and... We'll see what the, there's some folks that have sent, I guess, letters of explanation of what they're looking for. Some may not be too interested in that. Some, because of where they're at, only want part-time. So there's some, we'll have to see what the folks want. Any other questions on that? Thank you. So I'd ask Sharon and Sonya to come to the table. Sharon and Sonya are from the UMass Donahue Institute. As you recall, we have engaged the Donahue Institute to help us kind of discuss and work through the process of developing the campus and developing public-private partnerships that serve the mission of the district long-term. We've had several meetings already. We've, I've learned a lot from the material that we've had already. There's something at your table, which was at your table tonight, with handouts from the Donahue Institute. So I'll just turn it over to Sharon and Sonya to talk about what we're doing and answer any of your questions of where we're at at this point in time.
So, thank you. It was an honor to be able to talk to the talking. So Sonya's, Sonya traveled down here for the first time today. So this is not, not the first time.
How did it go?
The first time here.
Any tornadoes?
We traveled with the storm. It was really exciting. I love weather. So, you know, it was like, honestly, lightning arching over the road. It was, it was choice.
And we welcome you tonight. Thank you very much for coming.
No, it was, it's our pleasure. So thank you for having us. And thank you for like, bringing us into this project. It's really exciting and we love public-private partnership. It's like the community getting together. We do really good things for everyone. So just, I don't know how much you know about the Donahue Institute, so I thought I'd give you the like, two-minute thing. The Donahue Institute was actually established in 1971. It has, it's the UMass Donahue Institute, but it has nothing to do with the academic part of the university. We're actually the public service and research and economic development arm of the UMass President's Office. And so within the Donahue Institute, there are eight divisions. A lot of people know economic and public policy research. That's probably our oldest, best known. They do UMass, they do mass benchmarks. They're part of the census. They're doing the marijuana study, if you've heard about that. So they do those things. We have also evaluation research, other kinds of programs. We have civic, they work overseas. We are nonprofit funding and fiscal solutions. I'm going to actually ask Sonya to pass... I'm gonna actually ask Sonya to pass those out when we're done here. We are a unit that works with public and private nonprofits, so nonprofits writ large, to help them mobilize their community, sustain their work. We do everything from helping people do fundraising to public-private partnerships. We're gonna be coordinating some work with the Boston Regional Economic Compact. We're helping them structure themselves and do the administrative side of it, so we don't do economic research, but we help organizations work well together and be effective, and we do that in a whole lot of different ways, so. I'm Sharon Baratira, I'm the Director of Nonprofit Funding Fiscal Solutions. Sonya, say hi, Sonya.
Hi, everyone. I'm a project manager of nonprofit funding and fiscal solutions. I also previously worked with their applied research and program evaluation group, I've been lived on at H for ten years.
We also have a third member of this team, Jackie Wise, who was not able to be here tonight, but she's really the fiscal procurement person. She knows all that end of things. So if you start asking me how we do this procurement, I know that we do it, and I know sort of the basics, but she would be the one who could get into the room and maybe really around it. So I thought what would be maybe helpful is for me to go over what, we've kind of divided the work that we believe that we're doing, based on the conversations that we've had with Ed and Kevin, into three phases here. And the phases apply to, I think, when we were first talking, it was gonna be, there was the piece that's going to be legislated, legislature right now, which is the sort of bigger piece of that land and property, and now we've added in the athletic facility piece of it. So all of it, whatever it ends up being, these three phases get applied to both, I guess, is how we approach this. So what we propose, and I think, be interested in your feedback and questions as we go through, so please feel free to interrupt. The first phase is really gathering information. So this is where we issue an RFI, so I'll use a lot of acronyms here, Request for Information. And that's, we're going to, there's gonna be two things. One is Mint Man's gonna actually establish an ad hoc committee, if you will, and we've talked a little bit about that, but I think we still need to get a bit granular about who will be on that committee and how that will be comprised. But that will be essentially a steering committee, an advisory committee, a group that we will work with, which will kind of help direct where we go and look at what we're doing at each phase. So then we issue a notice of intent to post an RFI. And that's just to basically let people know it's coming, and as soon as the legislation passes, or at what point we wanna do that, we can issue that notice immediately. We're poised to do that. Then we draft the RFI, and that's really for us to gather information. We're asking for people to respond, and tell us what you're doing, what you're interested in, what do you think is important, what skills, expertise, facility you bring to this project. We're not gonna be making decisions based on that, it's not a proposal to do anything, it's just really to help us, inform us as to how we're gonna do the RFP process, which is the formal request for proposals. Part of the RFI process will also be, that will be publicly posted, and by the way, all of this is gonna follow chapter thirty-B guidelines for how to do this. We're gonna do all of this posting through the COMPASS system? COMPAS? COMBIES. It used to be COMPAS. COMBIES. That's the procurement system for the state of Massachusetts. So we'll be posting the RFI there, it will be on the Mint Man account, so it will be essentially coming from Mint Man, which is what it's doing, although we, Donahue Institute, will be the buffer. That's the beauty of this here. So we post the RFI, we'll get back some information. We're also going to hold what we're calling an informational, before we put out the RFP, or RFP process, RFP, RFP, what we call it here, both apparently, but it's the RFP. So we're gonna have an informational meeting, and we're going to target particularly people that the committee decides to target. So we'll invite people who might be interested in applying, but also maybe there are key stakeholders in the community that you want input from. And that's really a place where people can sort of say, this is what's important to us, this is what we think should happen, have you thought about this, questions like that, you know, it's the joint. So, anyway, no, I'm just joking. So that meeting and the RFI and the information we get from it informs how we put together the RFP, the formal request for proposal. And one of the beauties of having the RFI, and by the way, they don't have to submit to the RFI to be part of the RFP proposal, so we're hoping people will do it, but we also don't wanna hold it to, if you don't do it, you don't get to be part of the RFP. But what it will do is, I mean, imagine, for instance, the RFI process, there's a lot of people submitting athletic facility stuff, that you want other things, which are more occasionally focused, then we can really emphasize that in the RFPs. So depending on what we hear, what we think is important, we will craft the RFP to be exactly what we want, what we wanna emphasize, put out those values. Do you wanna say something?
No.
Okay.
I love listening to you.
Okay, good. Just because you won't have to be doing this.
Yeah.
So then we've created what, a stage A and a stage B RFP process. And we're doing this actually to help people not invest a ton of time if they don't have a good proposal to put forward. So we don't want people to have to put together business plans and really detail facility and all that kind of stuff. So the stage A is really gonna be detailed enough that we get a sense of who they are and what they're proposing, and whether they have the capacity to pull this off, so we'll be asking for qualifications, and what have you done like this, and, you know, what have you brought to the table? But we won't be asking for the kind of detail in stage A that we will ask in stage B. So stage B will be an invitation based on what people say in stage A. So, and that will be a place where we will be looking at people, we have a scoring system set up to keep this as transparent as possible, so when people come back and say, why didn't we get chosen? Or why didn't we get to stage B? We can say, here's the scoring, here's how it happened. We'll have that all be very clear, very detailed, we'll have the ability to respond to that. And so then stage B is by invitation, and that will be a very detailed proposal with a lot of the parameters that you see established there about land use, financial structure, evidence of financial solvency, a very detailed business plan, those kinds of things. So, and at each stage, this ad hoc committee, I haven't really figured out what that's gonna be called yet, will be working with us to sort of go over it, is this what we want, the RFI to say, the RFP to say, and then looking at the results. And we will probably for the RFI, we're gonna summarize that information and give it back to people, so they can go through everything. The RFP process, depending on what the committee wants in terms of getting into detail, the committee will be involved at that level, too. But it will be, we'll be scoring this stuff, so it can't be, oh, I know this person, they're really good, if that person hasn't actually hit the points that we need them to hit, then... Sorry. So that's the situation, and along the way and towards the end, that we will be looking at the sort of developer solicitation, first the entity that we will be hiring to actually do the development, the building, so. So I thought, there were a couple of other attachments, I just wanted you to see. Sonya has been, you've gone really deep and actually dug up a lot of RFPs of other people, which we think we can improve on all of them, but we thought this was a good example of an RFP. Not probably as detailed as we're going to be looking for, but they asked for a lot of things, and I thought it would just be helpful to see, oh, this is what an RFP is. You'll notice they asked for things like role and experience, structure and staffing, facility use, those kinds of things. There were things that, as Jackie was looking at it, who's the third person you know, so here, she's like, oh, no, no, you have to ask this, too, and it's good. It's like, okay, that's good. One of the things we're gonna be doing pretty early on in this process, we'll be asking probably the committee everything to do this, is as we craft the RFI and the RFP, is really establish, and you'll see her sampling of certain values and outcomes that...
The RFP.
...they want from this project. So I don't know if this is something the school committee does, I assume not, but I don't, I don't know how in the, in the week to get here, but. These are some examples of values and outcomes that we pulled out of some of the proposals that we saw, and then I added some in that I just thought might be something to think about for this group. So that was just to give you an idea of some of the different steps that we're looking at and some visuals for you here. So, questions? Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
So here's the, the part that is most unclear in my mind. Here we have a very valuable piece of land in a very valuable location that has additional value because it can be related to this institution here. There are lots of possible opportunities to leverage the use of this property, some of which we can imagine, some of which might be great ideas that we cannot imagine. So trying to understand the first portion of this, the RFI, because that's what we're trying to figure out, I guess.
Right.
What kind of thing is actually possible? How are we gonna put together a document that is welcoming enough and broadly distributed enough, so that although we may have a few ideas of how we wanna proceed, and I see your document at the end here, which is basically that, is here's the kind of things that we're interested in. How are we gonna come up with a document that is not scary for people, saying, oh, they have to have this and this and this, when maybe, we don't want all of these things, but you know, when you have a lot of people put their things down, sometimes they contradict each other, and that might, you know...
Right.
...scare some people away. How do we get this RFI out there enough to enough diverse groups and people, so that we really do get the feedback, which may include the kind of stuff we envision, and also out-of-the-box reasoning that we can look at and say, gee, we never even, even thought of that. And so that's kind of my main question, and also followed would be kind of the timeframe of the RFI process.
So you just articulated a value that you have for this work, which is that maybe we bring in innovative, out-of-the-box kind of thinking, out-of-the-box proposals. And so we, first of all, embed that really clearly into the RFI that we construct. So we can put those values out, and I think at the RFI stage, you're not gonna say you need to generate this much revenue or have a business plan, we're just really saying, what are your ideas for this? And we might ask some questions to get a sense of who actually has capacity out there to do that, but we can ask that in very general ways, I think. RFIs are typically, you know, give us five to seven pages of what you dream about for this. And we can make that as business sounding and off-putting, or as sort of visionary and inviting as we want. And I like to think that this is what we do at Donahue, we write things that are visionary and appealing, and, or the other thing, if you want that. So I think that's the first thing.
How do you get into enough groups of people? Because I can't even imagine all the different groups that would be useful to give this document to, to say, hey, you should, you should look at this. Make sure that the widest range of people see this, so we have the widest range of possible options. How do you do that?
So part of this, we're a little challenged, because we have to do this within chapter thirty-B, and so we have to do it through COMBIES. But you can, through COMBIES, invite folks to respond. So you can, if someone here generates a list, and we can go to folks who we think might be able to give us, think people to add and entities to add to this list, we can direct that request to anyone. We can say, this RFI is out, you were recommended, or we would really like you to respond, you know, we think you have something to add. So we can certainly do that, I believe. I'm pretty sure we can do that, so.
Yeah, I'm realizing I have a question. And so I'm gonna ask today your question, because I've been at Donahue for ten years, but I'm not, not typically involved with RFI or RFPs, I'll be having a slightly different role here. For RFI process, is, but I feel like I'm hearing you say is to gather input and ideas more generally from lots of different groups about ways the land could potentially be used. But my understanding is that RFI might be more for folks to complete that process who actually wanted to do the development themselves.
It's usually done by people who do that. So we have two things, remember? We have the RFI, and there are entities out there who could have creative ideas who might not think to come forward. I mean, I'm trying to pull an example off the top of my head and I can't, but, you know, I'm sure you have many ideas of things that might be out of the box. So I think part of the committee's job here is gonna be to assemble who those entities might be that we can directly invite to respond to the RFI. There's also the, the public meeting, and depending on what we wanna do with that and how we wanna structure that, we can, we can have it be really wide open, or we can limit it to certain groups and certain types of folks that we wanna hear from. So there's a lot of folks to do with here, yeah.
And it seems to me that the very nature of assuming the legislation passes, and we're talking about a timeline of up to fifty years, nobody's gonna put in a proposal for a hot dog stand.
Right.
You know, we're talking real investment, real forward-looking. I think the trick is for, or the trick is part, and I think you've alluded to it, is how do we know what's going to be viable for, for that long period of time?
And... I mean, this is the beauty of the RFI process, is that it tells us what's out there. So if we get back, I don't know, four swimming pools and ten hot dog stands, we can go, okay, something is not working here, we need to hear from other folks. So we can back up and redo that process, or think about a different way to proceed into the RFP. So I think that's the important thing here, is the RFI process actually allows us a fair amount, that phase one, I don't wanna just say the RFI process, because there are different pieces to it, we can add to that, we can build on that. So I hear what you're saying, and I think, obviously, that's a really important thing, we want this to be exciting, innovative, something which is...
Or even focus on uses that remain flexible and adaptable to changing circumstances in, I mean, look how much workforce demand around this area of Boston, Eastern Massachusetts, has changed in the forty-some years since Mint Man was founded.
And so then, there's a second value we put down. So what you bring forward has to be something that could be flexible, that can grow and evolve over time.
What's the timeframe to, just, the other question I have, is what's the timeframe for this?
I mean, I think we can set, I know that Ed would like to see this, I think you said the end of March two thousand nineteen, you would like to have the phase three completed, I think, which is the decision about who are gonna be the partners in this, this venture.
We have, our timeline is really being generated, if you look at where we need to be in three years, and what needs to happen, this is what drives this timeline. Because by the time in March, we'll be preparing to move to the new building, and in September, this building will start to come down, and we need to know what's gonna be here. We have a general sense, this is gonna be athletic fields. So the phase one is, I almost have a phase one A, which is the athletic fields.
Yeah.
And then phase two A might be up on the hill where that other additional property is. Because, you know, the idea of having a broad net is, is a great idea, but we have some finite and well-defined framework around what we can do right here in this building with the athletic fields. We're constrained by the weapons, what's been designed by KBA, we really can't go out of that. What we're trying to do in phase one A as a district is make sure we have, you know, state-of-the-art athletic facilities that are gonna be attractive to our, our district members and others that may generate a revenue stream. I think the funky stuff is gonna be, and I funky stuff, I say them all out of my heart, 'cause I love funky stuff.
That's the good stuff, yeah.
It's like what happens up there, 'cause that's where a pool would have to go, or offices, or classrooms, or, and, and the time constraints we have on part A are really around the MSBA requirements, that we need to complete the MSBA project and then move forward with the district's addendum to what we couldn't get done with the MSBA. And I'll, I'll back it up even further, the legislation is the triggering circumstance. That's not done now.
And we're just doing one A, the athletic field pieces, like, say, the...
Well, I think we'll, we'll plan on everything, but there's gonna be milestones if we don't hit.
Right.
We'll back it up, but the thing we must have when we're done is a plan for athletics recreation.
I think what, I think what was, and then I'll call on people, be honest, I got my order. I think what may have been invented in, at least from what I was in Jeff's question, is what goes out to people, asking, inviting them to, to submit an RFI? What is said to them? How much information?
And who goes to the other?
Pardon me?
And who goes to?
Well, yeah, but my, I agree with you, but my question was really, what is said? What information goes out?
I mean, there's nothing prescribed about it, so we can say whatever we want to say within certain limitations. I mean, we have to say, this is a request for information, this is not binding, this is a, you know, basically the language of an RFI, and this is an RFP that you see here as an example. An RFI is much more open. It's, it's usually, we want to, it's, it's not explore, but basically what you're saying is, we're exploring the possibility of doing this, and want to know what's out there that might be able to support our doing that. What you have, what you bring to the table, what's important to you, there's a whole bunch of different ways that we can order this, so.
Okay, I, yeah, I understand that. We can, we can decide what we want to say, but I know we can't say tonight what is going to go out.
Right, so we can come up with a draft. This is, this is our job, right? We're drafting the RFI's, we're drafting the RFPs, and then whatever entity, if that's the committee, or the school committee, or how that works, that's up to you. But you would then be looking at it and going, we want to have this piece, or we think this, we want it to be more open and accessible feeling. So that's our job, to draft these things, yeah.
And I totally agree with you two about who the girls do, Jim, and then, and then Gray, and then Alex.
Sure, thank you, thank you, thank you for the work, work thus far. Are you, are you share, I think, some of the same sentiment that Jeff was getting at, and you have, you have addressed that it's a, it's a back and forth process, you can't expect that we'll know all of our values, I'm right off, I'm right off on that, and we'll have to go back and forth. And I, and I look forward to working with you in that collaborative process. As I, as I read this, this page with the proposed project and phases, when I get down to Phase 3.4, that's where it says, UMDI and Minuteman Committee to Assess Responses and Select Final Partners Based on Scoring Criteria. I think it says, you know, you know, how we nailed the scoring criteria correctly, and that the final selection process really is, really is up, really is up to the committee. So I sort of reworked this in my own mind, it's more, it's UMDI and Minuteman Committee to Assess Responses, and Minuteman School Committee to Select Final, Final Partners.
Absolutely, yes, that's a good point. I also should say that scoring criteria is a weird thing. You feel like, well, you come up with the points, but then maybe you actually want this other thing there. So when you're doing your scoring criteria, you build in things like, we want diversity of function, we want target population, or whatever those things are, so that you can have three really high-scoring proposals, but you still make a judgment between them, and you can be transparent about that.
Right, so I would, I would want to make sure that people preparing the documents didn't feel that there was a formal or any formal contract that we would, you know, we would just calculate, calculate the scores, and that was it.
You can also give different weighting to different criteria.
Absolutely, yeah.
And make that somewhat less.
And do we have a constraint with regards to the property and structures, heights?
We have to go through a process of, you know, zoning and approval process, like we did with the rest of this, but recently Lexington eliminated their height requirement, or constraint, I guess, so you can go up a lot more now.
So the reason I say that is, is if we outline what the constraints are within the zoning, and the types of things, the athletic fields and structures could be elevated, like they're doing in Dubai and some of these other areas?
Oh, well, let me, no, we cannot do any of that. Our, our athletic fields have already been approved by the Lexington Conservation Commission, and we fortunately, we got approved a full buildup, like we're, like we're, we know we can't afford it, but we got it approved anyway, by the Lexington Concom and the Planning Board. It took several, several months, and so the fields that we've shown you, that you may recall, we should show you again soon, those are the ones we're going to build. What we're trying to decide now is, or what we're hoping to be able to do, is instead of having one synthetic field and grass fields, is have three synthetic fields with lights, with concession stands, with bathrooms, with, you know, the whole nine yards, and other fields that have come into vogue lately, that people are looking for, you know, cricket fields and that. So that piece is all done, we can't.
Okay.
Up there on the hill, we've done nothing.
So my, my point was, is that you may entice individuals or developers who are looking for full athletic facilities that are in scale, so you could actually put the, the fields on the top, tennis courts underneath.
That wouldn't be allowed in Lexington.
Again, I'm wondering, when we talk to, you know, the scope of the project, and interested parties, we need to define what our building parameters and, and scope is of the types of.
Well, I agree, but a lot of that's going to be up to them to figure it out. We don't, we're not doing that legwork for them. If they don't know how to get those answers, then why are we even thinking about having them there? And they're, it's a developer way of life, I mean, they know what they are before they walk in here, from what we've seen.
It is, I think it's typical, we've actually, we have a partner who does work with public private, the entities that are applying to do this work, they're actually University of Ohio. They say typically, you put all that stuff on, you have them come up with a business plan, a development plan, that's part of them proving that they can do what it is they say they're going to do. So I wholeheartedly agree.
Alex, you're up.
Oh, thank you. I like what I see, I have a couple of questions, and then I also actually have one comment on my question. So with regard to the scoring criteria, you can include language, it just said the district deserves the right to award it, basically to the benefit of the district, and that gets you out of that. Or not out of it, it just gives you a little wiggle. But the question I have relates to the definitions, certain procedural in this document. So number one, you have an ad hoc committee, you have a Minuteman Committee, and UMDI and Committee, maybe Decisions, and I think that all has to be kind of clarified.
I agree.
Okay.
And part of this is that I wasn't sure what the committee was called, so as an ad hoc Minuteman, I don't know, we have to, you know, establish what that is.
Yeah, I think we should have a little discussion about that, now, how you want to proceed. Do you want to have, because on this ad hoc committee, we've always imagined there being, you know, teacher representative, a community representative, certainly school committee representation, and we can propose some things for the school committee to take a look at. We have to be careful about how this is formed, because there, as I was reading this again today, there may be some ways to get a functional committee that's not constrained, but can move through this in the speed, in the rapidity, in the effectiveness that we need to move through this. So that's one consideration I have about the ad hoc committee, or task force, or study group, I don't know what we, you know, think about that. We can have it as an agenda in June, and talk about it at the officers' meeting.
I would encourage the officers to discuss not ceding the authority of the school committee to subset with just a few towns represented for something of this magnitude.
I just have a comment to the administration. I recall, a number of years ago, when we first started thinking about this, and the kind of imaginative, long-term thinking that was necessary, such that at this time, we need to work on it, we're ready to go. And I appreciate that, because it's been a long, a lot of years, just kind of spinning the wheels, and a necessary minute, you had to do it like that then. And now because of what you did, here we are today, and don't know exactly where it's going to go, but I'm very happy that we're here, doing this, the right thing at the right time, and I'm very excited for it. I want to thank you for that, because that kind of long-term thinking was necessary to get us to this part where things have started to become more concrete today.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And this is a relative quick question, is all of the land that we're talking about subject to the legislation on the western side of line?
Lincoln and Lexington.
So there's some in Lincoln as well?
Our entire property would be.
I'm wondering about the zoning approval.
Well, zoning has to be done in accord with the zoning, the legislation has no impact on zoning requirements.
But if a proposal is entirely, if, if a particular proposal that comes through and is attractive and involves construction, if it is on the Lexington side of the town line, is the zoning approval planning board or ZBA up to Lexington?
Yes.
It does not have to go to Lincoln?
Lincoln's already approved, a little corner of the field that's going to be, have three lights on it.
That's, that's helpful if it doesn't.
It's very helpful.
Thank you.
It's helpful if it doesn't have to go to Lincoln.
Yes, well, that's in the record.
Anyone else have a question?
I just wanted to make one quick comment in response to what you said, the other piece of this, Donaui Institute is not a decision-maker in this, we are an advisory passing on it. So I, I want to make sure that even though the language may not have been clear, we are very clear about that, so, okay, yeah, okay, good. And we will make the language more clear and clear.
Yeah, I really appreciate you guys, very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you for letting me drive.
Thank you very much.
It was exciting, if you want to get me to drive out any thunderstorm, any trouble.
Okay.
Drive safely.
You're welcome. He's the one who might continue to work with you.
We're here, we're good. We have offices all across the state, so someone's going to, it's, no, just you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I guess that's all.
Yep.
That's all of you. Ford, school building, your report?
The building team continues to be on time and on budget. The construction process was completed, as you know, its foundations, the steel erection is now commencing building CMU walls, building stairs, underground internal piping, insulation, soundproofing roofs, and pouring concrete floors. A lot of progress, which we've last met. What I begin to appreciate is the complexity and the creativity and the intricacy of the internals part of the building. And I really invite you all to contact me and go out and see it. And the reason why is there are no walls, but you can now see all the structure, because the structure is there, and you can see through, and you can see where cosmetology will be, or where plumbing will be, and all that. And it's, it's a great time to go through the building, I was really quite excited. And I, I want to congratulate Castle Booths, because not only that, the building sets down in the property, so Lincoln may not appreciate it, but I think if they take a good look at it, they will. It's going to be, it's in the earth, and that's a good thing. So I really encourage you to consider going out there. Last week was safety week out there, we're on the construction site, Gilvane hosted daily safety instructions that were about half an hour to an hour, depending on what the subject was, for our team of labors. On the last Friday, last Friday, excuse me, was culminated by a white tablecloth luncheon provided by the students, and it featured Big Head, Big Head Ed's barbecue, which they all very much appreciated. So I just want to show you a few, a few pictures, and there we are. You can see the CMU walls going up, you notice that the roofs are pretty much in place, they're now being finished up top, but that structure is, is up there. This shows you the second floor of the far south side of the building. Note that the walls, I mean, the floors are in, concrete floors are already poured there, which I think is really quite exciting, and it's looking up towards the north, as you see. This is, shows the roof structure, I'll have a film for you at our next meeting that will really show it very well, it was just released today, and it needs, everything we do has to be approved by Gilvane. But this is on top of the roof, with those are vents that you see that they've put in, and this is over the automotive area. This is the white tablecloth, tables that were set up by, and you can see the students and staff in the background preparing, and the formal luncheon that was there, the men and women that were there, really, really appreciated it. They had a demonstration on how to use ladders, and the safety of using ladders. They have a raffle after these, where Gilvane, if you have your blood pressure checked, in this case, then they pick names out of a hat, and I think everybody that did that gets something. This is the whole team, you can see that was there on Friday, and you can see up front is our students and staff members who, who put on the luncheon, but that's, that was a, it was really a great fun event. And that is it. That completes my report for this morning. Jeff?
Yeah, so Ford, this new roof is going to leak less than what we have now, right?
Well, I was in the building today, and I all of a sudden, when I heard the rain coming down, I heard, I think I had his radio on, oh, there's water coming through, you know, one of the places. Now, this roof is rotten and leak, and one thing that I thought was very interesting, I thought it was an optical illusion, but the roof is not flat. It slopes. You're not going to see the slope because of whatever they call them, the walls that go around, but there, it slopes, so the water is all going into drains, and it's not accumulating, will not accumulate on top of the roof.
Okay, so we will no longer have to have administrators lie down on the roof, putting pieces from flying out?
No, you're not going to have to go up there at all. But I'll tell you, I think it's kind of cool walking up on those roofs.
Anything else?
We do have, for those that are interested, we have a pet hawk that is down by the south side that gathers out there almost daily, sitting up there on the corner of the roof, looking down for food.
Looking for lunch?
To the wetlands.
I'm going to take a picture.
Oh.
So it's going, going very well, scene is great, and I really invite you to give me a call, and we can set it up pretty, pretty easily, if you want to go out there.
Jim? Are there certain, certain updates you, you, you know that you would be here?
You don't need to be here, I mean, I will try to be here, but the Cask will, will take you out. I just would like to have anything to float for me. So you know, if you want to go out on a Thursday morning at 10 o'clock, I'm sure we can probably make that happen. Saturday and Sunday, it might be a little difficult.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ford, very much. Jack Lill, principal report?
Thank you. The 20th of February, after 2018, making school sound for approval, and willing to know that two things that we'll not see on here are the NCAS dates, which just came out through DESI, so we're going to plug those in tomorrow. And also in the month of November, George and I have yet to determine when the showcase day will be, that's why it's to be determined on that second week there, but trying to strategically post that date a little bit this year, so we'll get this on paper. I'm glad it should be ready to go.
Do I hear a vote to approve that we can have a discussion?
Okay.
Carrie, did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, Carrie, any questions for Jack? All in favor? Any opposed? Your statement, thank you, Jeff.
The second approval seeking this evening is a overnight field trip for our Skills USA students that will be heading to Louisville, Kentucky, leaving Monday, June 25th, and returning Saturday, June 30th. It'll be approximately six to eight students and two adults, I believe, or three adults.
seeking approval for that trip.
I would love to approve the event field trip to Skills National Leadership Skills Conference in Louisville, Kentucky, June 25th to 30th, 2018, as presented.
Hang on just a second. Okay. Any questions, Ford, for Jack Lill? Or comments? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Let's bring back two student handbooks. We are making some changes to the handbook. I would say the most significant is the attendance policy, which I've had conversations with Ian and Elizabeth about. So we're not so much changing the policy, but we're changing some of the procedures for how we manage the actual policy, consequences and things like that. So I'm not quite sure if it speaks or warrants the approval once we have it ready, but it still has to move through my school council, which will be tomorrow evening. And then depending on whether a new job approval or not, we'll have it ready for the June reading. So that's it. Let's forget that's still a student handbook and attendance policy. And lastly, a school improvement plan. When I first came on as principal, that was one of the first things that we wanted to accomplish since it was past due. When we, when my management team tackled that project, I think you have to remember that we had no idea at the time that the new building would be approved. So we created that plan with its end date being this June. However, after careful planning and plenty of meetings, and Mary Ann can verify, we've decided that after careful review, we feel that that plan is still, still should be put in place until June of 2020, at which point we would then create a new school improvement plan based on a new building, which adds to the integration of CTE and academics. So we feel confident that the present school approval plan should continue through 2020 if we're prepared to do that. So there's really no need to change it up or improve it or upgrade it.
Any questions, Ford, for Jack Lill?
Jack, was there a reason why we should maybe do it considering the kids will be in there in September 19?
We wanted to...
Or is it too early?
It's too early. We wanted the kids to get in there and we wanted to really see how the new building was going to adjust to our curriculum of CTE and academics and the integration of both. And then as the year flows through, we'll certainly get together and create a new plan starting in June of 2020. And actually, when we had our CTE team on a few months ago, the team that came in looked at that plan and said it was perfectly fine into that.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Jack, very much.
You're welcome.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. The first item on the agenda is the third quarter financial statements, starting on page 21. These were reviewed at the last finance subcommittee meeting. And just wanted to point out on page 22, on line 91, column G, you'll see that we're anticipating a projected balance of roughly $50,000 of surplus balance in the FY 18 budget. You'll see in column F, however, that there's about 451,000 or so at that time of anticipated expenditures. And those, I think, are rather conservative on the high side. And we did lock the budget in terms of freezing for the end of the school year or on the end of March to censor this. And when I say we locked the budget, basically what we did was we asked staff to put in their purchase orders for what they expect to spend this way now in the school year. We certainly recognize that there will be situations where supplies will be needed as we kind of come out of the end of the school year. So we don't, you know, it's not a hard read, but it's more or less an opportunity for us to do some planning. But at least this gives me, gives us an indication that it looks like we're trending towards a surplus balance at the end of the year. I don't expect it to be 50,000. I expect it to be a bit higher, but I believe the planning purposes as of this quarter, that's step out. So additional detail that supports that by salary and non-salary line add is provided also on pages 23 and 24. On pages 25 and 26, you'll find the revolving accounts. I don't feel anything here of concern at this point. The only thing, some of the location areas are lagging a little bit, but still have positive fund balance for the roast products except for the school store, which will transition to online modeling. We may abandon that and revisit how we do that. But that's an issue. The new school funding is fine. We are running about a $37,000 deficit in this food services account, primarily due to a maternity leave that we covered and kept that person on board in anticipation. We know the staff change has never been here in eyes. So if we back to those costs, it would really run pretty close to break even in the fall week. So that's where we are in the revolving account. In terms of page 27 in your packet, what you'll find is this is the cash summary reconciliation through the end of February. You may note that in the audit report, that one of the things that was noted was that we were lagging on our cash reconciliations. And it related primarily due to transition in the business manager position. But we've got this up to date now so that we can move it forward and we'll be fine with this. I wanted to include in the financial reports to just report to the school committee where we are in the reconciliation, so you can always follow the reporting reports. I'd also note that the auditors were beginning their field work for fiscal year 18 the last week of May. So it's likely left and now they're back. But we'll be prepared on the day before.
Kevin, they love you, but they can't stay.
They'll come back to me. And then finally, on page 28, as a result of one of the financial policies that we implemented, was a cash balance report from the end of March, which basically gives each of our bank accounts a bank balance and interest at the date. So I think those are the third quarter financial statements that we'll review with the finance subcommittee at the last meeting. And we got to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Kevin?
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to 10 Mill Street repairs and upgrades. There's some correspondence on page 30, 31, based upon an analysis that was done by Matt McLean at Facilities Committee, based on some concerns brought forward about the structural conditions of the building itself, the house itself, and the heating and air conditioning systems at 10 Mill. As you can see, it's a 30-year-old building. We had our staff take a look at the work that's required to be done. And that work is summarized on page 29, roughly about $58,000. And it's important to note that we did do some renovation on 22 Mill and did some work about $110,000 on 16 Mill as well. So I think it's time, given so many observations here, that these are the types of things that if we don't address, they'll just continue to get worse. So this was discussed with the finance subcommittee meeting. Recommend?
Vote to recommend.
Vote or recommendation? But anyway, support.
Yeah, support.
Support's moving forward with investment of $60,000 in upgrading 10 Mill Street. And as we saw on the revolving accounts, those accounts are running a very positive balance.
I just wanted to say that a simplified version of the request was put in front of the finance subcommittee at where we asked for more formal estimates and we got everything we asked for in terms of the level of detail. And I think that's all there for you. But we were happy with it. I think we had thought about whether it was something that should be phased over time or was there more work that could be done on a, you know, on a less comprehensive basis? But this seems to make sense to us in the end. And we thank Kevin for taking the extra time and for the staff people who put more time into it.
I saw it. Jim, Jeff, and in the, just to follow up on that, we, at the second meeting, there were numbers there. Some were not completely untitled at them. There's a range of 58, sort of on the high end of some of the ranges. And that's why when we make a motion, we make a motion that caps the spending at $60,000. And we also, you know, talked to Kevin, and Kevin is our, he is our point person on this sub project, sort of make sure that it takes up.
Jack, and then Ford?
My only question is, is strategically it likely that we will want to maintain this property as a house over the next, say, 10 years? It won't be part of another project that we're going to use? It won't be part of the, what we just talked about before? It's likely to have value for us as a house over an extended period of time? That's my question.
Yes, yes, yes. I would see that changing in the future.
And will not affect the project that we may proceed in?
Be different in a different location? Correct. So we complete, it's exciting to keep up the campus. That's correct.
Just want to make sure that was on the record.
Ford?
It looks to me like the work should be done by our existing faculty, and I assume our students may participate. And in which case, when will this work be done?
I think for the most part, this work will be a student project. There'll be some painting and some other things that we'll have to subcontract out. But given where we are in the fiscal, in the school year, we'd likely, depending on what we have for outside projects, I think we'd be looking at the fall.
How long will it take?
I haven't worked through that yet. I would think, again, I'm not sure what they have for the outside projects, but if we were to prioritize that, I'd likely think we'd be at the time for the school year.
So might be inconvenient for people that occupy that building?
Playing state of the building. He has it on it.
I think the tenant will want to work around it.
Okay.
If not, I'll be...
Nothing better than working, you know, living in a building under construction.
The tenants have been used to construction, you know, that...
Well, I know, but it's good to be...
They haven't complained at all about it.
Been sleeping with it. It just seems, you know...
From those tenants? No. All the other ones I have.
Any other question, or comments? Okay. Yes, Jim?
And so I'll move that we approved building repairs, upgrades of 10 Mills, which was presented, up to $60,000 from Facilities Rental Fund, 13000-403.
Second. Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Unanimous. Okay.
Thank you. I see refers to a memo that's on page 37 in your packet. You may recall as part of the revenue plan for the FY 19 budget, we committed certified E and D of 540,000. When we adopted the budget, the E and D had yet to be certified. So now that it has been certified at 620,000, I'm asking the school committee to formally commit the 540,000 by the vote that's listed on the memo, authorizing 540,000 from the certified E and D for your member county session for the FY 19 budget.
Someone?
Second. Any discussion or question? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Unanimous.
As on item D, as a follow-up to the meeting we had with the auditors, there was a vote directing the administration to continue the contract with Meliant and Heath. I've asked them to revise the contract and that's included in your packet. I refer you to page 50 of that document. At the top of the page, you will see the fee for fiscal 18, fiscal 19, fiscal 20, very modest increase from what we were paying in the previous contract. The audit itself is going to be $32,000 in 18, $32,519 in 33,000 fiscal 20. The retirement system fee is 700, I'm sorry, $7,500, that is paid by the retirement board. And the student activity fund only needs to be audited once by the outside auditors in one, every three years. And that one-year cycle begins with fiscal 18. So in fiscal 18, the amount will be 3,500. The subsequent years will likely be using another outside consultant. We've looked at the Mass Association School Business Offices. They have a group that does this for about $1,900 a year or so. Anyway, I just wanted to report back, we already voted to move forward with this contract.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Okay. Oh, we don't have, sorry, we didn't take a vote. So don't put them in.
But it was approved.
It was approved. Yes, correct. Okay. Any updated town meetings in FY 19 budget approval?
Nine of the 10 member towns have considered the town meetings, the assessment article for the fiscal 19 budget. And I'm pleased to report that all nine have approved the assessment. As we're required to have seven of the 10 towns accept the assessment in order to approve the budget. So we have a fiscal 19 budget.
Exactly. Exactly. Lee Hill, Hill and Lee Belmont downtown meeting, their vote doesn't matter.
Which, for tidying us up for our next three years, what they deserve on the record.
They would tell me that every year I was there.
Did they vote? No?
They haven't voted yet.
Yeah, I didn't think...
No, no.
Okay, who can ride along?
Item F is just a brief update on a discussion that was had at the finance subcommittee meeting regarding OPEP, possibly considering the development of a long-term strategy, perhaps deal with the OPEP unfunded obligation. As you know, we've been putting in over the last four or five years, maybe about $50,000 just as a recognition that it is a funded liability that's out there that needs to be dealt with. So I think that in the course of the audit, the auditor's report sparks some discussion about, you know, are we at a point now where we might be looking at different strategies that may help us move forward, more toward the long-term, thinking about how we actually deal with this rather than just kind of deferring it. And it led to a discussion about what would be the right level of funding that might be required to at least stay level rather than continue to see the liability grow. And there was some discussion by the committee about looking at, looking at it perhaps on a per-employee basis or looking at it, looking at maybe funding the current year liability just to kind of minimize the long-term growth. And by funding it and, you know, moving those proceeds into a trust and managing them, you know, maybe be able to accumulate some interest that offsets some of the liability as well. The discussion then turned more towards, you know, how do we equally assess the OPEP liability, given that we have a percentage of our student population that is from out of district and there's no real mechanism right now that allows us to be able to do that in terms of regulation? So I wanted to at least bring this forward. So I wanted to at least bring this forward to the committee, to the committee that the finance subcommittee is having that, that discussion around OPEP. And I'll invite other members of the committee to add to my comments. But I think we wanted to make sure that the full committee was aware that these conversations are ongoing, and we'd like to bring them to the full committee at some point once we're able to look at developing some type of progress.
Carrie and then Jeff.
I just want to say, it is not unusual for a community or a school district in the state to have been lowballing funding of this liability. But that does mean that we are also in good company when we have to pay out of, you know, pocket in a year where something needs to be paid. What we are interested in is now looking at a better long-term and putting ourselves in a better position so that particularly the higher or lower year, more level. And as we get past the highest years on the debt service for the building, start to hopefully have some revenue coming in from other sources such as we see no good property, that we can get more serious about putting money away for this OPEP liability.
Yeah, a few questions, Kevin. First, would it be prudent to have the OPEP fund buy some lottery tickets as one way to kind of get out of the dilemma really quickly, maybe?
I'm not sure if you're legally allowed to.
Okay. So more seriously, although.
We can accept donations from.
How are, how are we dealing with this and our strategy in dealing with this compared with our communities? In other words, are we less aggressive than they are in addressing this, more aggressive in the middle? Because I'd be disinclined to be more aggressive in dealing with this than is typical within the district.
Let me talk about both of those points. I'll start with the second. It varies. I mean, the towns that are very close to their levy limit, by and large, don't have, don't have any, any spare change put in, and so they're putting in a lot of things. Other towns, like our member town Weston, is able, able to put in much more in. So it's driven by wealth. The conversation really came out of the audit that showed that the liability grew by one point three million dollars between one year. And that makes sense when you take a look at our, at our population. And I think the very first step, I think, at least what I'm speaking for within the finance committee, is that we just start to recognize that and then measure that, measure that more precisely, and view the promise of post-employment health benefits as a current cost. Whether we fund it now, I mean, that's a budget and a cash flow question, but we have to recognize that. When we ask people to work here, one of the things that we're giving them is this promise, promise of post-employment health insurance benefit. So, and so we should just keep, we should, we should start to think of that as part of the budget process, which is why Kevin was sort of talking about. And we aren't trying to deal with the backlog, the twelve million dollars we started with as we go forward. And so that's sort of motivating it. And then as Carrie had mentioned, you know, that this liability is similar in certain ways to the debt, debt liability as well, and especially as borrowing gets put into place. We'll have years where the debt service is high, and we'll have years where the debt service is low. And so we can start to think of this as a way to, you know, sort of smooth out that whole ask of, ask of the communities in terms of long-term liability.
But Jim, we are talking with the magnitude of over a million dollars to do that. Is that correct? As you said, if they increase by a million in one year.
That is, that is what we're talking about measuring and bringing back to you and saying, whether or not we fund it. That's, that's what we're doing.
That's the magnitude of the funding.
Exactly, yeah. And then, and then the third thing is that unlike towns, we don't have, we don't have tax and power. Most we have is, is on the assessment. And so it's a question as to when are we going to leave our future school, school and community members in ten or fifteen years? So I, so I would make a case that it's probably more important for us to be aggressive than our towns, simply because we don't have that tax and power.
And you're completely against a lottery ticket, I think.
No, no. I mean, the lottery.
Do you want to donate?
But I mean, one, but it's a long-term liability, and at some point, when there's real money there, I mean, maybe, maybe we think about a longer-term investment plan that goes with it. That would be a combination of, combination of stocks.
So a million or so a year to keep these.
Jennifer, then Carrie.
So, or at least that's from the town, has been very aggressive to fund their entire liability. So they, we've been putting aside for ten years, most of non-recurring funds that we've been receiving. So cell towers, these, things like that have been going into the OPEP liability. And we're pretty close to fully funded, not quite, but we're getting there. But the difference between a school district and municipality, our OPEP liability in municipality was four million, projected through this year. So, yeah, a school district, I mean, the Shob school district is fifty-five million. So it gives you an idea, because just the population is so heavy for people, which is where your liability comes from. So it's, it's a very different beast between a municipality and a school district, I think.
Carrie, Carrie, pardon me.
Just going to say, the liability is real, but the amount of the liability is an actuarial, is the result of an actuarial computation, and it's going to fluctuate from year to year based on lots of circumstances. The people sitting around this table aren't going to be able to track or follow on our own. But those benefits really do need to be paid to our retirees, and whatever we have saved up, wherever we save it, is to our advantage in the year it needs to be paid. The liability is real, even if the amount is difficult to pin down.
Jim and then Jeff.
And, and, I mean, that if we didn't do anything, and in fifteen years, it was a sixty million dollar liability, and it was really impressive, it would be, I mean, the only mechanism we need to allocate it is based on the current population of, population of students. So it creates a really strong incentive for member towns to think about leaving. Whereas if we do it as part of the annual budget process, and everyone's sort of paying a fair share based on, based on what their student population is that.
Putting that out of the staff that year.
Jeff?
So just to get this fixed in my mind, this issue is actually, is harder for a district school than it would be for many of the communities because of the tighter box we're in with respect to sources of revenues and hiding stuff. And.
Yeah.
Well, the number of staff relative to the size of the org, you know, this is one organization which by its definition is going to be staff. That's what we, that's where our expenses go. So by definition, it's going to be harder for us. So we're going to, and as you say, I understand that it's a little bit of a myth in terms of the exact amount, but the, the order of magnitude is probably not that far off. So the order of magnitude to tread water is a million, which is over a million, which is a huge percentage of our budget. And I think we better have a conversation with our member towns. They must realize that this is coming, although they probably, you know, don't keep, you know, in a separate compartment of their brain. So if we're going to start seriously doing this instead of little baby token amounts to just apply so as we'll remember for it for the next year, then we better have a conversation because it is going to, even if we do this, you know, fat year, lean year kind of thinking and implementing, it's still going to have an impact on our assessments if we don't want to substantially cut students' services.
Kevin, what's your take on that?
I think we have some challenges, as was articulated, as far as our ability to fund it. You know, it kind of gets us back to where we were before the capital fee came into effect in terms of how would we, how would we be able to charge non-member towns for their, for their share? My concern is that when you factor in the tuition fee, the capital fee, the fed fee, and then you go on, and OPEP fee, at that, maybe the tipping point that may, that may become unattractive from a financial point of view for out-of-district towns. So it, it does have some, it does have some challenges to be thought through. To just point, the question was raised in Arlington, you don't know what's at, what's at play, but it wasn't really a pointed question. It was more or less, I see you funding fifty thousand, what's your plan? And it was sort of like, you know.
What's your real plan?
What's your real plan? So, so I think, I think, I think it's appropriate to have the discussion, and I think we need more time to kind of work through the mechanics of that so we can give a more informed recommendation to the full committee about possible pathways to proceed on this.
We're not, we're not going to come up, we don't see anybody, I mean, we're not going to come up with something that says we should be fully funded in five years or anything like that. But, but the liability is real, and, and we should be making a little more progress.
Jim and then Jeff.
I mean, that'll be a lot simpler to talk about this as a, as a serious proposition when we've got six hundred and fifty students and do go, you know, at our current level of enrollment.
All in favor?
But it just doesn't work.
I just, I greatly appreciate the serious, the willingness to take on a very painful topic that nobody wants to have to deal with because it's, it's nothing, nothing positive. Well, you know, some people run away from it. Other people say, let's take it on, and let's spend the time to look at it seriously, even though it gives us a giant headache every time we look at those three, four letters. Thank you.
So you see this as a future agenda for subcommittee and for the school committee?
Well, certainly, finance subcommittee is already taken on, is something that we talked about. I think Jim makes the point, I think as the enrollment increases, it might be easier to deal with. We're still, we have a lot of transition that we have going on, you know, the project placing the debt. I think people are concerned about how the debt service has any impact on tax rates. So I think this is the challenge to phase in at this point in time, right where we are.
Okay, any other questions or comments for, for Kevin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Subcommittee reports, Alex.
So we have four policies for your consideration. I'm seeking comments from Jim Gammel and from Kevin. Where did you get any others? Okay. So just to get through these as efficiently as possible, let's do a motion to approve for second reading as presented E and D meal charging policy. And then as soon as we have that motion, I will explain what the change is.
Okay.
Okay. So if you look at page fifty-five.
Is the motion for all four, or is it?
One motion.
E and D, just one. One motion. Okay. That's the way I put it in my work sheet, just one motion.
Yeah. So refunds on page fifty-five. On May fourth, Kevin sent a note that there were eighteen accounts at the end of the year with thirteen less than a dollar and nine less than fifty cents. So they've changed the wording here in two ways. One is to receive a refund on any remaining account in excess of a dollar, and instead of three fifty. And the second one is to not to require the student to make a written request to have the refund. So, and then there's one typo in the last sentence of that. It says with a written and request, so they can't just. That's it on that one. Does anyone have any comments or questions about?
Jeff?
Just have a quick technology question, because as a person involved with technology for a long time, I look at all technology issues and says, is this a good part of technology or the evil part of technology? We get the evil part quite a bit in the news lately, as we should. This is the good use of technology, to have a system that eliminates the embarrassment of the student. It's all electronic. Nobody knows if the student has a produced meal or no meal, because the system just deals with it automatically, so.
I should point out one other thing, actually, when you said that, I just want to point out one thing. I don't know if you've been paying attention to the Senate bills, but there was a Senate bill going through that may change this all.
But they tabled, they gave it to committees, so it's not going to come up this year.
Well, they gave ours to committee two, and it is supposed to come up, so we'll see.
They said that that one was, that was effectively gone for this year. This is the news report I heard, I don't know. I was very interested because it dovetailed exactly forward when we discussed that.
Yeah, it is. So this may not be like more, but do you have any other points? Anybody else have any points here? Anybody really object? No? Do you want to vote? On favor? Opposed? To man this? First one down. Seven-one, G I C H, motion to approve, G I C H has written alcohol, tobacco, which are these supposed to, to revision. So I'm back on page, on page fifty-six. There's no change, but we've seen it before. Does someone want to make a motion? Okay, we've got a motion. And second.
Page fifty-six is current policy.
Oh, sorry. Fifty-seven. Now, on fifty-seven, page fifty-seven is the one that has the change. So first of all, Jim, it's added a reference. And the second thing is that they've moved a sentence that used to be a note at the end in the last one you saw up, and so it's inside of the policy, except for the drug substances, blah, blah, blah. Does anyone have any questions about this one? On favor? Opposed? Any other messages? Next one is I L T. G B E V D, sorry, page fifty-eight. Make, take a motion to approve G B E V D online fundraising and solicitations for second reading.
Sure.
Second. Okay, so here you can see for yourselves that they've added the definitions of crowdfunding that were in the note into the main policy, and they've added student activities, sports athletic activities to the list of educational programs only, and that is the only change. Anybody have any remarks? Jeff?
It says, the principal shall approve all online fundraising activities within their buildings.
Oops. Where is that?
That's.
We can just take out their buildings. Is that acceptable? Since it's on one building.
And then just a quick comment to the superintendent. The second paragraph from the bottom, employees using crowdfunding services shall periodically disclose and write into the superintendent the names of all individuals whom the employee has directly solicited.
Is this the right policy?
G B E V D.
As we discussed this at the executive team extensively.
Please, no changes up in there.
So what's your question, sir?
The question was, this seems almost kind of strange. It's crowdfunding, but you've directly soliciting individuals. And I wonder, you know, if this has actually been a problem? Have you actually seen this? Or is this just?
We have not seen.
Envisioning the future.
We're envisioning the future. There have been some requests, I guess, and we didn't have anything to respond to the request under regards to problems. Some, and it's been, I don't want to say abused, well, it's probably been abused and misused more than you may have heard about in public, but the superintendent's here to talk about it.
Can I actually put this forward?
I'm not sure what crowdfunding is. It's the GoFundMe.
Yeah.
Well, then, I guess my only comment would be, my guess is that since these things are evolving so fast, you're gonna, don't be afraid to come up with revised policies. Again, you may have to do it many times in a short period of time, but you should do so as it evolves. I expect it to evolve very fast, and you should too. So feel free to bring this one back frequently over the next few years until we then have a better idea of what the pros and cons. until we then have a better idea of what the pros and cons are going forward for this stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Or Alice, you ready?
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? No, all in favor? It's the end, this. Yeah, it can't be shifted down if it is. Okay.
Not without approval.
Okay, I L D.
Can't wait to hear about that one.
Jeez, all right, I L D. This one is transmission to educational surveys and research, take a motion to approve for second reading. Seven. Okay, tag team, pepper. There were no changes to this one. I don't know. There were no changes. Anybody have any remarks? Jeff.
I would just want, if you could tell us just a couple of examples of surveys that are done on a regular basis that fall under this policy.
Be at risk.
Be at risk.
Survey.
Is that the primary one they have in mind for this, or are there others?
Well, the department, there's been different agencies coming out with different requests for surveys. And if we responded to all of them, you know, it'd be a weekly thing and very disruptive. We're just trying to have control over what we do and minimize the disruptions.
This is also with opt-in?
Parent.
Probably not opt-out, but an opt-in, right?
It gives parents a little say.
Anyone else?
Okay, Alice.
Anybody? All in favor? Opposed? Done, thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
Thank you, Ross.
Okay, Jennifer.
Good boy.
All right, is that the year again? Superintendent Evaluation, you have a lot of material in front of you. The survey monkey is going to be ready, help me out. Bye.
It's ready now.
Yeah, I'm ready now. Okay, it'll be ready for you tomorrow. We're going to give you a deadline. What have we decided?
I don't know what it is, but I'll put it in the email.
Okay, I think they made a decision.
Roughly.
I think, yeah, June first. To be presented at the next School Committee meeting.
So maybe June. Okay. Any questions, any questions for Jennifer? All right.
Just one comment, the package with, that contained both the goals and the evidence of the goals was very self-explanatory. So that's why, you know, in previous years would have been, right, remember all the discussions we had in previous years? It's taken a few years, your work, Dave, and the superintendent's work, and it's the same way that he's put it all together. It eliminated a lot of questions.
It's a very comprehensive document.
Comprehensive document. I just want to point out the improvement in that process over the last few years.
Any questions about the endocycle project report, or the process? Okay. So we move on to PIN.
Okay. Okay, move to approve the minutes of April tenth as presented.
Any question about? All in favor?
I have to stand because I was not here.
Any opposed? So we're nine, zero, one. Two, sorry, I should have looked at the left, so it's eight, zero, two. All right. Now, I'm assuming there is a need for an executive session, so do I dare a motion to go? We're in a session. So we typically read the.
Who should stay and who should go?
Yeah. Just let, just this, this day's not to make any, but not to contribute.
We'll need to read that all form.